Yeah, hi. I'm Bill Dougherty, Barnstable County Commissioner and the Chair this year of the County Commissioners. There are three of us. Today, we're going on a tour of the Lower Cape to take a look at some of the activities of our Cape Cod Cooperative Extension Service. It's an opportunity for the County Commissioners, members of the Assembly, and some constituents to take a look at some of the wonderful things that our Cooperative Extension does. We're going to be riding in a Cape Cod Regional Transportation Authority bus, and that bus, which is part of the services that are provided, I happen to tell you that the RTA has been very aggressive in providing fixed route services across the Cape, and the route that we'll be going on will essentially trace the Flex Route service for the Lower Cape. I hope that as you watch the rest of this video, which will be live in terms of what we're going to be seeing, that you'll have an opportunity to both see where our bus goes, what we do, and if you have any questions, please get ahold of us. Our website, our webpage is www.barnstablecounty.org, and we hope that you'll take this opportunity to find out more about us. In the meantime, welcome, and let's get moving.
As I said on the bus, Celeste Makely and John Makely will be our tour guides here. Celeste is a master gardener with Cooperative Extension and also the originator of this community garden.
Visionary, yes, these two.
And a team.
Yes.
And on your way out, I do have to share this with you. They had a little celebration last week, and we were honored. Sheila was there, honored, and they donated a bench in our honor, and with our name on it. It is very beautiful. It's cement hand sculpture by a local artist. It is ripe and fine. You can see it from here. It's yellow, and in front of it, there are yellow daylilies when the daylilies are up. It's really beautiful. So I know you have about 15 minutes. They're ready for lunch. Everything's set up. A couple of things I want to tell you. First, the garden we started was in 2009. We started looking for a place for the garden. No, John, this is part of the project. Looking for a spot, and the spot we found was Wetland. So the town, very generously, let us use this, Suzanne Grant Thomas, who is the coordinator, who is the Director of the COA, was delighted because they're hoping to put solar panels on the roof of the COA. Now, if you look around, this is what we have. It was all, they were woods, but they weren't very pretty. We didn't have one oak tree. We didn't have anything that was very nice, just the scrub pines. So, a very, very generous gentleman, Dennis Murphy, has a construction business, whatever, and he took down a third of an acre of trees. He took out all the stumps. He gave us some cop soil. We went to the DPW for mulch, and it was $24,000 worth of work, which we didn't pay for. He donated it. That was very generous. A local electrician, Tommy Adams, put in the power. We had a well. We had a test well here, and he put the power into the COA. The well digger is Frank Capello, and he did the well free of charge, except we paid for the pump. So I would estimate that about $10,000 went into setting this up, starting in 2009. We don't have much shade, or I'd say come in the shade. So here we are. It is now, 2010 was our first opening last year, so it's been a year. What our mission was, was to turn the garden over to the gardeners. So we laid out a plan that was a flat organization. John and I are moving, and we are, well, the house is for sale. Anybody want to buy a house? You can put that on. Anyway, so we gave up our plot this year so that the gardeners could manage themselves. I have some information here. I'll show you. We wanted a flat organization. I did invite the Director, who is now the present manager here, and each function of the garden has a leader. That leader became a chairperson. It became a board member, and then from that, they chose a chairperson. So it's really, it's very democratic and really kind of fun to do. But we have some drama, 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 drama in the gardens. I'll have to show you this. Before I show you the drama, if you go to the Cooperative Extension, and if you go to the Horticulture Department, you will find a section that says "How to Start a Community Garden." We shared this with Peetown when they were doing theirs, and Chatham, and Eastham, so that, you know, we had rules and regs in place. Let's share everything instead of starting from scratch. So I started to print it. Now, what does the dog have to do with the garden? This is Shakespeare, our dog, who came for a whole year while we were digging and measuring and everything, and he's part of the garden. But if you, I could only print part of it. The whole thing didn't print. The printer went crazy. But I'm going to leave this with Bill as a little packet, so you can see. There's also, this is the chart on how we organized it. Now, the drama. This is a beautiful thing.
Before we get to the drama, this lady has to move her car. She has to get to a...
Is that in a tomato plant, and everyone knows that this is, my tomato plants are very close to my heart. In a tomato plant, we don't know the bird. It could be a swallowtail. It could be a wood thrush. She built her nest in the tomato plant and had three beautiful eggs, and you could, I'm going to give this to Bill. Now, yesterday, I came by, and it rained, and the tomato plant was toppled. The nest was toppled. The birds had hatched, and they were on the ground. So we...
Were they alive?
Yeah, two. I found two. Now, you can see crazy ladies. Mama, surrogate mom, and the real mom, and we're looking, and we're looking. So I picked up the two that were good and put them back in the nest, and called the fellow who actually has the plot. So this morning, he suggested that we make a sling. So we made a sling out of the clam bags. You know those bags? So I made a sling. I attached it all around, and the nest, it is literally falling apart, now has a nice little shellfish-ish. So we're very proud.
Is mommy bird happy?
Mama is still feeding. We have one left.
Mama's swinging the thing and singing lullabies.
Mama's happy.
And I have to say, I love your earrings.
Well, this is...
The peas in the pond.
The peas in the pond. I need tomato earrings, but I don't have them. Anyway, let's have a little tour, and I know you don't have, you probably have only 10 minutes for the walk through.
Actually, the food's running late because of this traffic, just redlocked out there. So we have more time than I thought.
It's a weekend, we got.
Yeah, you can just take a walk through. One of the things that you'll notice is we had to put up a deer fence, and the deer fence was about $3,500. Sheila said, hey, what did we pay for? And the Commissioners, I have to thank the Commissioners, Bill Clark and the Commissioners, because without that grant money, we would not have been able to do what we were able to do now. So the fence is better fenced. Because this is a deer path, we did have to do a high deer fence. And then the other thing that was expensive on the way out is another $3,000-something. The shed we had made by, who made it? The Nauset High School or?
The Cape Cod Regional Tech.
Regional Tech. Cape Cod Regional Tech.
Harwich, I think it is.
But it's still, even for just materials and free labor, because the kids did it, it was like $3,000-something. So without the money, the grant money from the Cooperative, from the land management, we would be struggling. The rest of the money was fundraisers. So please go on in, excuse me, please go on in and take a walk through.
Different plots are for different people, is that how it works?
Yes. Yes. There's a third of an acre. Each person, last year, we had 33 plots. You're welcome to go in and poke. The one I'm going to ask you not to do is where the bird is. We're very happy that she has taken in on the care of her little one.
Which is where?
And I'll show you. You see where the tall beanpole is? She's right behind that, so we won't get that close. But there's a third of an acre. Last year, we had 33 gardeners. This year, I think there's 28. Some have a half of a plot. Some have a full plot. A full plot was 20 by 20, and we charged $30. A half plot was 10 by 20. And so many people were excited that if someone dropped off, they said, I want the extra half. So please come through. John and a group of volunteers, we've been in all of the watering system.
They said they're getting rid.
Now, at the end of the summer, things aren't exactly the way they were, you know, early on, but please take a walk through. The fellow down the end is the present manager. His name is John Morrison. So are you gardeners?
Yes, some of us.
Yeah.
Everybody seems to use hay or straw for their...
We decided to use salt hay, which was free. We went to the beaches and just collected it. So it was free. This was a very interesting garden. As you can see, this is, we have some permanent structures. If you had a garden, then you certainly had it the next year because you've developed it and put it in. Last year, he had this great big scarecrow made out of branches of a tree. It was actually a tree, and he put a cowboy hat on it and it was a woman. It was really wonderful to see. But you can see what he's done with his driftwood.
Lot of time.
It's quite decorative.
What about plowing? Does someone plow, or does each person just do their own till?
Everybody does their own. We did the first year. We tilled from top to bottom, but this year, because we have some dogs in our neighborhood, they decided they just want us to till. Now, this garden, last year, we had a therapeutic horticulturist, and she is not well, so she's not doing her garden this year. But she was a therapeutic horticulturist, and she was helping people with handicaps to garden. And so we had her bench set up in here. This doghouse actually is where the pump and the well is. My husband built a doghouse and connected all the hoses, and so it's actually a system. You can see. Maybe we want to look at our actual pump.
And everybody uses the same kind of hose.
We provided the hoses. We supplied the hoses, and there were plenty for everyone.
That's wonderful.
Come on down. Come on, just wander down. You probably have a few minutes before lunch. And John Morrison is our chairperson this year, so I'd like you to say hello to John.
Yes.
It's Frank Morrison. Oh, is it? But you get the, just in August, August garden. I know, I know. Maybe you'll have them for lunch. Yep.
The dinosaur.
Look at this!
Is this great?
The dinosaur. And I would like you to meet our present Director of the Wealthy Community Garden, John Morrison.
Hello.
And I'm sure they have questions. We have, help me with this. We have the County Commissioners. We have...
League of Women Voters.
League of Women Voters.
An Assembly person.
I'll be out of the way. Assembly person.
We have a reporter from Barnstable Patriot.
And John has a committee that, I brought our little cheat sheet.
Oh, great.
And each person, as I said, becomes a board member, and they chose John to lead them. So...
Sheila, how are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Good.
I'm going to leave you with John and go to the end of the line, but I have to show you. At the last garden on the left, the gal's name is Bacon. She provides the lettuces to the Winslow's Tavern. She also has tomatoes. So it's her B L T garden, by Bacon, lettuce and tomato garden.
Yes. I know. It is very cute.
If you have questions, I'm sure John can help you.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
So.
Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you, too.
Pleasure.
This shirt and that back there is, that's the third one.
Lion's Clean Garden.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a good board.
But it's a committee that we all, we always agree, but we come to consensus. So... Anyway, but it's just so nice that it's today and not a couple of days ago that we're here. And it looks even more fruitful than it did last week.
Certainly much more lush. A little bit of rain makes everything perk up.
Yes, that rain and the sunshine is really bringing it all.
Everything was going like clockwork, and now he's stuck in traffic with the food, so we've got another half an hour.
I was going to say, we didn't run into very much traffic. He said, it must be coming east now.
Many of you have seen this before, but for those of you who haven't, my name's Mike Nguyer. I work for the Cooperative Extension. I run the Hazardous Waste and Water Quality section of the department. Have any of you guys ever been to a hazardous waste collection on Cape Cod? Great. So you've probably seen myself or one of the folks that worked with me. The idea being county helps each of the towns go out. We have a regional bid. We go out and get the best possible price for the contractor that comes and picks up hazardous waste in each of the towns. We also, the county pays for the setup fee to bring the contractor into the town, and then the towns pay for the disposal of waste. We have a number of volunteers. We have AmeriCorps members that come who survey every person that comes in line. Our job is to educate folks about what is and is not hazardous, how to reduce what they're using that is hazardous, and to explain to them the proper way to dispose of things and how to reduce the amount of toxins that they're exposed to in their life and that they're using. For those of you that are from the outer Cape area, this is a brochure that gets mailed to every household on Cape Cod. We can pass these around. These are for Wealthy, Trow, and Provincetown. You want to take a look at them? There's some general information in them. And they just kind of explain things that you're going to commonly encounter as a homeowner, and how to dispose of them, and how to deal with them. I'm not going to go into too much more detail than that, except to say that that is probably the most powerful educational tool we have because it goes to every household on Cape Cod. And it's also important to note that Covanta CMAAS actually pays for the printing and mailing of that brochure. It's about $40,000 a year to put that out, and they pay for it. You know, it is in their best interest because it helps them keep their waste clean, but they certainly don't have to do that, and it's appreciated that they do pay for that. A couple of other things. You guys have probably, many of you have heard about flares. These kind of flares are the handheld flares that people have to have in their boats. Ocean-going vessels have to have three of these. They expire in 42 months. These type of flares have a substance in, a salt-like substance in them called perchlorate. And one of these flares can contaminate 1.3 million gallons of drinking water. They're a thyroid inhibitor, so you wouldn't want to use this as a cocktail mix. That'd be a bad idea. There are alternatives to these. The Coast Guard has not, has only conditionally approved them, so you still do have to have these. But we're encouraging many towns and have been transitioning out many of the towns from the old style flares to the newer LED flares. So you can, the battery, it's not too bright in this one. You can probably see there's blinking lights, you know, so they're just an LED alternative, and they're less toxic, really non-toxic. So we have a collection site in every town to pick up flares. The county actually has a repository where we put these all, and then we dispose them through a hazardous waste vendor.
You know, I'm thinking, thinking back at old movies and this sort of thing, like there's a ship in distress. They would shoot flares in the air to let people know. Do those do that?
We, no, there are other kinds. There's many. That's just...
And do they recommend for ships to have those as well?
They're also required, and we do take all those in. Those are parachute-style flares or rocket-propelled. Some of them look like shotguns. But yes, all of those come in to, typically, the fire departments every...
So how do they gather those? Say if somebody has shot those in distress, and they're now out in the ocean?
Yeah. Once they're, once they're used, all the propellant is burned up, and so they're no longer a hazardous substance. But you can imagine for, if you had 10,000 of those, maybe one gets fired. I mean, it's very, very uncommon that someone's going to be in distress. So you have all these residual expired flares.
Okay, so people are, it's explained to them to dispose of those properly, like a battery or?
Right, exactly. We send out mailers to the marinas and the harbor masters and whatnot. Those all come into the fire departments or marinas, and then we collect them and dispose them. That's a regional service the county provides. Some other things you've probably heard about, our Sharps disposal program. We provide Sharps containers in every town on Cape Cod except for Fowl. If they choose not to participate, but anyone can go, Fowl residents can go to any other town and pick up Sharps containers. These are free. Residents pick them up, use them, return the used containers back to where they picked them up. The county pays for disposal. So it's another important regional service that's provided.
I've also seen those in the mall, public restroom.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of private businesses will provide these because an accidental stick, you can imagine, so if you're at the mall and you have an employee that's cleaning the restrooms, and they get stuck, it's about $25,000 in medical expenses.
Wow.
Minimal. But because you have Hep C, it can last three, over three weeks outside of the body, so you don't know what the person could be contaminated with if they get accidentally stuck. So there's a lot of people that use Sharps, and they're not just for illicit use. I mean, we know, everyone probably knows, folks with diabetes or hemophilia. And a lot of people now need to inject themselves at home, so it's a good way to dispose this. And it's a big cost savings to towns because of the number of sticks that's gone down dramatically. Because just because things go in the trash doesn't mean that's the last time they get handled. Oftentimes, all that stuff is going to be compacted, and folks at transfer stations, and actually, at CMAAS or at the Bourne Dump are handling that trash again before it meets its ultimate resting place or demise. So one other program we operate is, sorry, I'm just trying to do this as quickly as possible. Another program we operate is the mercury collection program. Many people are familiar with mercury-containing devices. So things like thermostats and thermometers, blood pressure gauges. You can see in a typical thermostat, the old style ones had this little ampoule in here. It's four grams of mercury in it. We collect about 2,300 of these a year on Cape Cod. We have the most successful mercury collection program in the Northeast and possibly in the country. Our residents are very aware of what to do with these. We collect these at every transfer station, at every HVAC, heating, cooling facility. Almost everyone, they're all willing to participate. So I go around, pick these up, and we inventory everything, and then that gets sent. All of these get picked up by a company called Complete Recycling Solutions, where their mercury's ultimately captured, and it can actually be reused in other applications. But I think the dangers of mercury are fairly clear. We understand that elemental mercury basically can vaporize, get into our atmosphere, and then through rain, settle in water bodies, and then it turns into a different type of mercury that can get into our fish. So it's a somewhat complicated process, but it all starts with elemental mercury. We want to make sure that we capture that before it gets into our environments. I could have done two hours on that, and that's the five-minute version. So if you guys have any questions, please let me know, or you can just catch me up.
I never know what to do with the little AA and AAA batteries.
The alkaline batteries, there's two different types of batteries like that. Alkaline, the state has said they are not hazardous, and it takes more energy to recycle them than it's worth capturing. So they actually tell you to put them in the trash. The rechargeable batteries are, can be recycled, and if you have like any Hering-A batteries, or if you have watch batteries, those small batteries, or any kind of rechargeable battery, you can bring those to your town transfer station or dump, and they all have a place called the universal waste shed. And that's where you bring like the curlicue high-efficiency light bulbs, and you can put those rechargeable batteries in the same place, and those all get mailed back to a place called the RBRC, which is a conglomerate of battery manufacturers, and they're mandated by law to take those batteries back and capture the elements there.
Did you say Hering-A batteries?
Mm-hmm.
And those, and that is available year-round.
Every transfer station.
Now, I did my hazardous recycling this year. You know, I was pulling out the stuff from my basement. So being, I guess, growing up in a Yankee area, all these cans of paint that we had, we never really threw away for so. I had this enormous stock of paints, half-used. And so I said, okay, this is my opportunity. It's a waste of things. So I loaded them all in, not carefully reading my brochure, and they all said, oh, this is all great, but we can only take about four of these cans out of like 40, because they were latex and not oil-based.
And we're as proud that we saved you money as a resident.
Well, that's right. And the paint shed wasn't open yet, so I had to put it all back in the car. And then, you know, but I left it out on my driveway, covered with the tar, because I said, if I don't do this and put it away again, it's never going to go. So paint day, I got there.
Paint is a big culprit, and I'm glad they brought it up. Latex is not hazardous. It can be dried up and thrown out, and you can recycle the cans, which is great. You know, to pay a hazardous waste disposal company to rid of latex paint is insanity. It's a waste of money. So that's why we do, you know, that's why we do try to educate everyone on latex. But interestingly, if you look at our hazardous waste collections, and you look at oil-based paints, about 70% of the volume and cost that comes in is oil-based paint. It's the number one thing. It's the number one cost the towns should dispose of.
Mike, we happen to know that my home people does not carry oil-based paint because of the action of the Cape Cod Commission to make sure that the only stocking things that were not...
I actually do remember Andrea telling me that Andrea Adams is the commission.
That's interesting.
And people might be curious as to, if I want to get rid of my old low-voltage mercury-based thermostat, what would be one way to do that would be to ask for a energy efficiency audit from the Cape Cod Comp Act, who would supply new, non-hazardous, non-mercury-based thermostats to replace them when you give them.
And we, exactly. So that's a great point, Bill. We, Cape Cod Cooperative Extension offer free replacement thermostats for your old mercury-contained thermostats, so you can get a digital replacement.
The other thing, I just want to follow up on the latex paint. If you do bring it in, they usually, they will check it to see if it's still good, and a lot of that will go towards Habitat for Humanity, and if they're building homes, it's all donated to lower-income or those types of efforts. So...
And we do work with each of the towns to make sure that the most efficient and thoughtful thing is done with all the waste that comes into the towns. And over the course of the next five years, we all know that the price of disposing of waste is going to go up, and it's going to really force the issue of recycling, and it's going to give people a lot more motivation to do it. And you see, if you talk to anyone that lives in Sandwich, they're going through the pay and throw movement. So, which is an act of, there's some controversy about it, but if you think about it, it's the most equitable way to dispose of trash because you're only paying for what you're using.
Right, right. What part of the fluorescent light bulb is the bad part?
The vapor that's in the middle of it.
But how about the curlicue ones?
It's the, it's the, what they do is they put a minuscule amount of vapor inside of the, both the high-efficiency ones and the traditional fluorescent ones that you see up there, and that conducts electricity in. It gives it that nice bright glow. But when a bulb is broken, it does emit a minuscule amount of mercury, vaporize mercury into the room that it's broken. So the amount that's in there is, a one-time exposure basically has no health effect. If you are in a room where every day there were bulbs being broken, then you should be concerned about it. The benefits of an energy-efficient light bulb far... The benefits of an energy-efficient light bulb far outweigh the minuscule risk of getting a little bit of mercury vapor exposure. If you do break one, the state guidance is to open a window in the room that it's broken, leave it for 15 minutes and then return. And to not use a vacuum to clean up the glass because it'll just spray the glass shards everywhere that might have some of that vapor on it.
But if it's broken, you can just throw it away?
If it's broken, you can still bring it to the same place that you put the whole intact bulbs at your dump or your transfer station.
How many people in the Cooperative Extension work on just the hazardous waste program?
It's myself and one part-time person. And we have an American member that helps.
How often do you think you meet with the towns?
With the department heads, whether they're a Department of Public Work Director, a Department of Public Health Director, Napa Resources, transfer station folks, I meet with them very, very, very daily. I would say, I'm on the phone with the department head almost every day. But, you know, there's 15 towns, three or four departments in every town, so, you know, as far as going to the selectmen's meetings, that's far less frequent.
If I may also add, you also organize the prescription drug recycle.
We have an education campaign on how to dispose of unwanted medications.
Right.
And that is a very, very complicated topic because of the federal regulations surrounding how you dispose of medications. And when a town collects medications, they technically become the generator of those medications. So it becomes extremely expensive to dispose of them in the proper manner. The DEA is the regulatory body that controls that. And they've been giving towns exemptions twice a year to do collections. And the DEA is actually paying for the disposal of those medications. So that's a great option for towns. But we are encouraging folks to take their unused medications, put them in a Ziploc bag, add alcohol-based hand sanitizer or some other type of substance that would render it useless, put it in your trash in an unidentifiable form. And the trash is most likely going to go to CMAC to be burned or born to be landfilled, either of which is far more preferable than flushing it, which would basically inject it straight into our wastewater, groundwater.
I have to be the bad guy again and stop the question. We have four more stops today and we're behind schedule. Thank you so much, Michael. I appreciate that.
One night there, but when I come to the wash.
Josh is a member of our marine staff and he, among other things, keeps track of our water quality monitoring devices. We have several around the county and I'll let Josh tell you about it.
Yeah, this strange bit of equipment here is one of our water quality monitoring stations. This one in particular has been monitored since 2004, I think. So, it's been ongoing for a while. And the idea is with funding actually from the southeastern Massachusetts Aquaculture Center and through the county as well, we set up some stations near sort of big aquaculture areas and shell fishing areas because shellfish men rely on the water to supply, you know, what they need for their product and nourish their products. So, it's pretty important to their livelihood. And it's nice to have something to be able to look at in terms of what's going on with trends and, you know, changes in the water quality. So we have four of them right now, Wellfleet here, we have another one in Pleasant Bay, another one in Catuit Bay, and then the fourth is in Barnstable Harbor, actually. And what you're looking at here is an instrument called a SONDE. It's made by YSI. And we remove this protective guard here. It's got a number of different sensors that can provide data on all different things. So we have a temperature and conductivity sensor, which is a temperature and salinity, dissolved oxygen, pH, chlorophyll, and also turbidity, which is basically the water clarity. And these can be deployed for basically two to four weeks, we found, before they get fouled up and instruments need to be recalibrated and things like that. So, every two to four weeks, we bring them back in and recalibrate them. But besides that, they're out, just in the environment, and every 15 minutes it records data. And this one in particular is set up with this solar-powered box so that it, through a cellphone connection, it can actually relay the data to our website, the Cooperative Extension's website. And people can see what's going on with water quality in real time. So, it's actually a pretty interesting thing. And we have it deployed in this tube here so that it's down within the water at all tides.
What's the unit, excuse me, what's the unit called again?
It's called a SONDE.
A SONDE?
Yeah.
How do you spell that?
S-O-N-D-E.
S-O-N-D-E.
Yep. I think that's just a term for an instrument that can measure multiple parameters at a single time. And more recently, we've been looking at moving our equipment more into the shellfish aquaculture area. You can't see it right now, but within all those buoys is where one of the major aquaculture areas are. And there have been some concerns about what's going on with Cohog, so a lot of the growers would like to see our instrument over there. And sort of at the same time, the town is very interested in getting one of these of their own to help monitor what's going on with their little propagation area in terms of nitrogen remediation and whether oysters could be used as a remediation tool. So, we're working on an agreement with the town to actually move this equipment over there so that they can use it, which is a pretty good benefit to them because they can see what's going on in real time and learn how their instruments are working and, you know, actually know that they're collecting quality data without having the instrument out there and not knowing exactly what's going on. And we're going to move our instrument, it looks like, out there on the back of actually Joel Fox's grant. So it's actually within the aquaculture area. It'll be interesting to have the ability to share the data of what's going on further up the harbor with the town's site and also what's going on in the aquaculture area. So, it's a pretty good agreement, we think, and I think it'll work out for both parties. That's about it for the water quality stuff. If you have any questions.
If you happen to see a copy of the September issue of Popular Science, they had 10 kids that won science fair projects. One of the science fair projects that this kid won from New Jersey was a cellphone, a smartphone app that would take a picture of water that was mixed with, was it Kali, Kali-18? Okay, that, you know, you turn the yellow. And what it does is it evaluates and analyzes the yellow color, the yellow pixels, and then can transmit it that way so you can get a bacteria count almost on an instant basis. So I sent, I saw it this morning when I was looking at the magazine and I sent, you know, an email over to George Hoyfelder about, you know, maybe this is something to look into. They're doing a field test at the Red Cross down in Mills, Mills Short Hills, New Jersey right now. But I think, I'm very excited about it because one of the problems with beach, you know, let's see, bacteria build up in beaches and water quality issues is, you know, the public wants to have some easy way of evaluating where they are. And although this might not rise to the level of scientific accuracy that this device might give, the indicators, I think, are the things that we're looking for. Because if you have something at the beginning of a stage of, you know, say, environmental change, you can do a lot more quickly than you can, than dealing with the, you know, the outcome of it. So I was very excited about it. You might want to look into it, yeah.
Certainly. From several sites around the Cape, if you go to a marine section of our website, you can see live data within 15 minutes every day. All those parameters that George talked about.
What's that website?
Cape Cod Cooperative, oh, sorry, capecodextension.org.
Go to the marine program and you'll see a link to YSI and that'll be the website that brings up the data for the two sites that we have online and then we have data for four sites total.
Everything we're seeing today is an extension program.
Yes, everything.
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Diane? I have with me here, we have Andy Koch, who is the Wellfleet Shellfish Constable, another participant in the municipal shellfish propagation that we run every year. And Andy's been taking advantage of the Cohog seed purchase.
Yeah, I've been at this job almost eight years, I've been working along with the county, receiving Cohog seed, which usually we get is one millimeter, it's tiny, it's like little big specks of sand. And we receive those usually in June every year. And what we do is we plant them in like four-by-four cages, metal cages that are lined with windows, window screen. And we grow those out all summer right on the bottom, they get spiked to the bottom on our town bed, which is down near Herring River, near the mound. And when they grow out, they're probably like the size of one of the heads of these nails in October. That's about how big they get. At that point in the fall, we put them directly in the ground and we cover them with netting. And the net stays on for a couple of years until they can grow big enough to, you know, protect themselves. When the shells are real brittle, when they're that small, crabs can come in and just pop them like candy. They'll wipe your whole, it'd take one winter to wipe out a whole, you know, 100,000 clams. So we've been working along with the county and we've also, they've been really great with helping us with disease monitoring. There is certain diseases that affect clams and oysters in the harbor here. And we had a pretty bad outbreak back in 2005. And it was great working with them. They, you know, they have the scientists come out in the field, we're collecting samples from all over the town, from South Wellfleet, you know, North Wellfleet, all over the place. And they're getting, they're able to tell us, you know, where the worst of the disease is. And, you know, a lot of graphs and charts so that the growers can be aware of what's going on, so they can take the proper, you know, actions to try and stop it. And we also, we've been working on a new oyster project over in Duck Creek just now. We're going to have that area closed and we're going to study it and see how oysters affect water quality, how they pump, they pump their filter feeders. And they're good when you have a lot of nutrients in the water, too much, they go back and they filter the water and they cleanse the water. So we're working with that program also. So that's basically, you know, all I wanted to touch on.
Thank you. And Josh, did you happen to mention that we'll be sharing the use?
Yeah.
Great. That's perfect. And we also have another local grower, oh, just back up a minute, when Andy touched on, you know, helping sort of identify the disease issues and what management steps to take. Early on in that process, we had hired Heidi Clark to work closely with us and we were since very, very fortunate to have her join us full-time. So Heidi's been intimately involved with all of these projects even before she was ever hired on the county. And Andrew Cummings is a local shellfish grower and he's also been part of our Research Farm Network for a number of years. Most recently was the diploid-triploid experiment. And if, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add?
From a, from a grower's perspective, our relationship with CMAC is really, really valuable. They're an incredible resource. And as Diane said, I've taken part in the Research Farm Network for years, five years. And we've done a lot of things, I think, one of the most profound things we've been doing lately is to work with triploids. And I know personally, it's changed my business, you know, tenfold. The advantages to growing it and some disadvantages, but it's a learning curve. But every year, we're learning more about dealing with those animals. And I think it's a huge benefit to the industry.
Could you just explain what those animals are? Are they?
Triploids are essentially seedless, they're not going to spawn.
Okay.
And so they put their energy into growing non-stop as opposed to a diploid, which takes a break mid-season at the height of the season. They spawn and they take a recovery time after they spawn. So, the quality of the animal is not as good and it slows the growth down, whereas triploid, the quality, the meat quality of the animal is never compromised.
Oh.
And they keep growing. So I turn over like 100% of my triploid now. I've been buying it and using it commercially for three years now. And I don't, they never go through two winters. You know, the second year, they're sold and they're not just sold as a legal oyster, it's a quality, quality animal. So that's really important. Obviously, we touched upon the disease monitoring thing, when all that went down with QPX back in 2005, had it not been for CMAC, I was one of the growers affected, you would have no source, there wouldn't be nobody to call, you know, just for anything. I mean, it was physically and mentally a draining time. And if it wasn't for CMAC, I don't know if, I don't know if I would have, I'd still be in the business. They were really, really instrumental in working with us. They didn't, you know, there are a lot of sides to that whole issue and they worked with everybody very even keeled and we really took care of that problem more efficiently than that problem has ever been taken care of anywhere else, you know, because we really jumped on it. And again, if it wasn't for CMAC, we couldn't have pulled that off. Or I don't think we would have pulled it off.
Just for, just in case people don't know what CMAC stands for, Southeastern Mass Aquaculture Center. And it's outside of the marine program and Cooperative Extension. It was a separate source of funding that actually we received when Senator Rostenbach was in office and he was able to have some money dedicated to aquaculture development. And he came to the county and it's still with the county. And we've been fortunate every year to get appropriation from the state to continue to do research on different aspects of aquaculture.
Right.
And also, the teacher in me wants to define triploid. We have tetraploid males, we all have diploid number of chromosomes, one set from mother, one set from father. The males we're using are tetraploid, they have two sets from both sides. And the female oyster is a diploid. So, at reproduction, the female passes on one set of chromosomes, the male passes on two sets, making it a triploid. It's just like a seedless watermelon. And it's just working now with oysters.
Where they grow.
No. Nope. They just put their, as Andrew said, they put their energy into growth as opposed to reproduction. And they grow faster and meatier and taste better and...
It's like an all-season oyster.
Yes.
As opposed to...
An oyster for all seasons, that's a good slogan.
Oyster in every pot.
I was just trying to avoid that.
Okay.
And again, a lot of people, or not a lot of people, but CMAC is often viewed as synonymous with the Extension Marine Program because the projects overlap and they're all for a common goal. So, CMAC, Cooperative Extension Marine Program, it's all kind of, we're all lumped together. Thank you, thank you, Andrew.
That's great.
I'd also like to introduce again Heidi Clark, who joined us in January. And Heidi, as well as Josh, have helped, been heading up a recent eelgrass, pilot eelgrass restoration project we've had that borders the edge of Wellfleet over into Truro in Cape Cod Bay. Just a couple words about the eelgrass project?
Sure, we had talked about the mini grants program where we help administer small grants to growers. We also work on applying for grants from other funding sources. So, two years ago, we applied for and received a grant from the Nature Conservancy to do some work on looking at eelgrass restoration. Eelgrass is the preferred habitat for scallops, so it's an important aspect of shellfish sort of restoration on the Cape. Eelgrass beds are shrinking or being lost throughout Massachusetts. So, Nature Conservancy and other people are interested in whether you can do some restoration. So we worked to look for appropriate restoration sites. We chose three and we did some test transplants last September and we're monitoring them through this year to look at the one-year sort of survival time. And then to look at whether there are opportunities around the Cape for larger-scale restoration. So we're in the monitoring phase, we have some pretty good survival at two of the sites, Truro and Bourne. So that's a sort of big project and it's nice because it's sort of outside funding that we were able to bring in to do some habitat restoration work. So that's a neat project.
In Bourne, are you working with scallop beds or are you working with oysters or?
We're just working with the eelgrass and doing trial transplants. So just like you would transplant a perennial in the garden, you take a small clump of eelgrass and transplant it to your, from a, from sort of a donor bed and transplant it to the spot where you'd like to get some restoration going and then monitor and make, and see if the plants will take. It's a little bit tricky because it's harder to control the, sort of the hydrodynamics and the sediment transport and the crabs and the bioturbators that'll come in and try to root around and dig up your new transplants. But, but we have some pretty good survival.
Are you working with the towns, for example? Are you working with the towns, for example, to identify and detect any places where they're in?
We worked with the towns to get the permits and to select the sites. Yes. Yeah. And they're all marked as required by the permit contingencies.
Well, I just hope that nobody's invading, it's sort of screwing things up.
Oh, no. We haven't found any sort of human intervention. Yeah.
You said scallops like...
Yes. Yep.
That's a nursery or a nursery's place for the scallops.
All right. From the marine environment to the upland environment. I first became aware of Bill's nursery tree program when we capped our landfill. And we wanted to make a vegetated barrier between the closest neighbors. And Bill's fine service provided us with those trees, which all grew quite nicely. Just recently, this spring, we had a beautiful sidewalk project in town, which I'm sure you recognized on your way in. Part of the, what really helped us out in getting the sidewalk project was we had a bunch of old diseased maple trees, silver maples. And they will heave in sidewalks and heaving the road and generally a safety hazard and a nuisance. But here in Wellfleet, we loved those trees and didn't want to see them perish. But through Bill's program, we were able to offer some beautiful nursery stock and help persuade people that it was the best thing to see some of these trees go and replaced with something that was less invasive. And they are all flourishing at this time. And we're looking forward to working with them again, as we have another big stormwater project coming with more sidewalk restoration.
We have trees.
Always been. I'd be proud to say I'm a friend of Bill Clark.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you.
Do Surf Safe classes of Food Safety Managers class. We've done them, I think it's our fourth year we've done them in this room. And this room expands into a much larger place. I think I've had as many as 35 or 42 people in one class at a time. So this is a great spot to be able to utilize. So grateful to be able to use it. So Surf Safe is a food safety course that we offer. It's a nationally recognized program. We do this probably about six times a year in different areas of the Cape. We try to reach out in different areas. Most people that do the Surf Safe class do it in Hyannis area. So it's nice to be able to come out a little bit farther. We also do food handling as a risky business, which is more of a food safety and safe food handling workshop for volunteers, for other food service staff who may not need the extensive knowledge that the Surf Safe offers. And it's also a lot less expensive to train people doing that. The board that I've brought here is one that Sue, my colleague Sue Burke, had actually brought to the 4H area at the fair, which shows basically the same kinds of things that we show in food handling as a risky business. And what it's basically talking about here with all of these pictures and all of these food models, it's nice being a nutritionist and being able to use our food models in our food safety demonstrations, is basically just the four simple messages that are current, that USDA and many other places are endorsing now, which is basically cleaning, separating, cooking, and chilling. If we all keep in mind those four steps, then we should have safe food, safe food handling and safe food to eat. So one of the demos here was on hand washing and was asking the kids, and we do the same thing with the adults, what's not really needed here? Well, we know paper towels are probably a better idea than a cotton cloth towel, that hand sanitizers are a nice touch, but they're not necessary part of safe hand washing. And just basic soap is a really good idea. We also cover proper glove use and the importance of glove use when we talk about food safety. And especially for volunteers, people that aren't used to working with public health. We also have cross-contamination right here, which is basically on this one showing you that if you have a hamburger, let's say, meat, and also produce, you don't want to cook, cut them with the same knife and on the same board. So we show this the correct way, separation. We have the fruit, the melon, on the cutting board with a separate knife, with the hot dogs on its own cutting board with another knife. And then on the far right there, looking at example of a salad bar. Salad bar, really important to have separate utensils for each. So the two on the left, the blueberries and the macaroni, are sharing a spoon, which is not okay practice. And then the two on the right there, having their own utensil. So these are just some of the basic food safety messages. And we find that if we make it interactive and have people actually participate, then, and have those good visuals, then it makes a lot more sense. We won't have time today, but on the right there, that little purple box, is our glow germ. And this is part of our hand washing lesson that we do. Basically, it's a black light that shows, and we have people use this special hand lotion. They put it on, they wash their hands as they normally would. Then they put their hands underneath this purple-black light, and it will reveal areas that they've missed through what they think is proper hand washing. And that's always very different for adults especially. We all think that we're doing a good job. And I've even told them, we're going to look at it, and we still have issues. So that's the last part of what we do.
What's the song you're supposed to sing when you're washing your hands?
You can sing Row, Row, Row Your Boat, you know, a couple times through. You can sing the alphabet a couple times through. So these are just some of the food safety messages that we're trying to get out to the public. And the education that goes along with them, cross-contact and food allergens is really big right now. So it's along the same lines that we're speaking to as far as food safety.
Who comes to your session?
The food, that's a very good question. Who comes? If I do the bigger Surf Safe class, which is an awful lot of material, typically it's the owner or the cook. In Massachusetts, you have to have at least one full-time person in each food establishment that has a food, that's a trained food safety manager. Yes.
Would that person be called a sanitarian?
No. Sanitarian would be Jane, probably over there. That is the health agent that has to go through a much more extensive, more than just food safety. They have to go through a lot more training. The food handling is a risky business. We have volunteers from church groups that will come that are serving in different venues. Also fundraisers, people do a lot of fundraisers. They will come and have that kind of training. People that do fairs, those types of things. So it's just getting everyone on the same page as far as why do I not wash my hands and put gloves on when I make a cooked salad for my family, but I have to do it when I'm going to serve it at the church supper? Big difference. We're talking about public health and serving to a larger group.
In the summer particularly, we see all these, the churches and other nonprofits doing all kinds of, you know, chowder suppers or fairs or food. Are they required at all to take any of these courses?
Required? No. What they are probably required by, and the towns handle some of this a little bit differently from each other. That's why I can't make a blanket yes or no. Typically, what I find is the health department needs to make sure that one person, the person in charge of the event, has the certification. So that person's the responsible person. So the idea is that they would make sure that everyone's working on the same page, is what's proper and safe procedure.
Good, very good question. Thanks.
Skipping over to another idea here, we have on one, you're welcome to take one of these. This is basically talking about the temperature danger zones. So those four steps of food safety was one way to present it. We also can just use a thermometer. There's an unsafe area, unsafe temperature area for food where we know bacteria can replicate very, very fast. So we try to keep food out of that. We've all heard the old adage, keep hot food hot and cold food cold. Well, that's really what this is built around. So we give these out also as an education piece to try to remind people. And I'll finish up here with a little nutrition piece here. Usually, I'm doing nutrition for you when you come either doing a cooking demonstration or something of that sort. So someone commented on my chocolate. I'm okay with chocolate. I figured it was after lunch. Also noticed, this is portion. Portion is a big, big message in nutrition right now. So these are portion-sized, dark chocolate, antioxidants, less fillers. So dark chocolate is a good thing. Again, portion is huge. So we would take one or two and not take the whole bowl. And also, there's a lot of non-nutritive beverages that are out there. We're trying to get especially children away from the whole public. But children, we're finding, are drinking a lot of soda and a lot of juices in inappropriate amounts. So this is an idea, doing something like Cala Grano and imported bubbly waters, got a little bit of that spritz of soda that you would like in soda. But also, if you look at the label, it has calcium in it. So you're getting your bubbly water, and it's a step above just seltzer water, because it's mineral water, mineral water, mineral calcium. So that's just the healthy soda. So this is, again, in proper amounts, both of these are okay. And I just want to take a quick moment. They will need this room for a meeting shortly, but I just wanted to have Jane, probably come up. Jane, health agent from Eastham here, who is welcomed to us and given us space year after year.
My wife gives me a very much hard time on expiration dates on food. How serious should I take that?
Depends on the type of food. Is it a canned food? Usually, you can go a little bit...
If it's beyond the date, it's in the garbage.
No, actually, you can go a little bit beyond some of those. If you go to the food pantry, they actually, they can't put it out on the shelves, but they can have another shelf where you'll find things that are maybe two or three months out of expiration. And it's just that the quality might not be as well. Food safety-wise, it's not usually an issue. It's usually more of a quality issue.
Well, thank you, Kim. I just want to take a chance, just take this opportunity to thank Kim for providing us the support on the regional level. At the local health level, we have real needs for expertise in a variety of different fields. And Kim certainly goes beyond filling that role for us in terms of nutrition education and food safety. And as she mentioned, at least once a year, and more often, twice a year, we're providing our restaurant operators, our food workers, this opportunity locally and regionally for the outer Cape to get training in this required certification. We also use supplemental education tools such as Food is a Risky Business, emphasizing what Kim just mentioned, the sanitization, just the whole issue about hand washing and how people think sometimes perhaps they're doing a better job in protecting the public. And in fact, I think it's a real learning tool that goes beyond description, when they actually see the hands-on result from that demonstration. So again, a very valuable tool. And also, just the connection with the foods workers in the community. I think they, the operators of the businesses really appreciate any effort we can make in making their workers more aware of the potential dangers of food sanitization procedures and so forth. And again, you know, I welcome you all. Thank you so much for coming. And again, support from the county is essential to what we do at the local level in so many ways. Bill Clark has helped us in many other areas in terms of pesticide information and Lyme and tick education and so forth. So all of these programs are really essential to what we do at the local level. So we welcome you and we really appreciate all these services that we're able to provide. And it just really augments what we're able to do locally. So thank you, Kim. And so, you know, continue the good work and we really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions here before I release the chocolate?
No questions, please. I just thought everybody might like to know that the number one nutritionist from the lower Cape was Margie Sparrow, who started as a nutritionist with Outer Cape Health and now owns the Chocolate Sparrow.
And Margie Sparrow trained me at Outer Cape Health when I worked for WIC years ago. She trained me as a nutritionist throughout Cape Health when she was starting a Chocolate Sparrow. So it all comes around. So I aspire to own a chocolate shop. I don't know.
Back in the day, since I've been, I have the dubious distinction of being the most tenured county employee. But anyways, that means I'm an old person. But anyways, I believe Miss Sparrow took a course we had. Years ago, we had a program called Home-Based Businesses. And we trained people how to get into home-based business and so forth. And it's an economic development opportunity for small businesses. And I believe she took that and got her start with the Chocolate Sparrow.
She always wanted to be an entrepreneur.
Yes.
She's got it really good. She got that. Okay. I do have some handouts here. We don't have time to talk a little more about nutrition, but the new Choose My Plate is now the new icon. Basically, most of the same messages as My Pyramid, but if you'd like to take one of these handouts, it kind of summarizes a few of the major points for it. Also, the handout that has to do with that food safety demonstration that we did at the fairgrounds. And please take one of these. And of course, if you need a little drink before you go on, and a piece of chocolate or two, help yourself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry we're late. Well, I'd like to introduce Mike Acana. Mike is a natural resources officer with the town of Eastham. And he'll be talking about Cohogs and other things.
Yeah. I was telling Diane, she saw the history of this place. This used to be an old boathouse that we had for our grow facility. That was knocked down. I think it was built in the 20s or the 30s. And knocked it down, put this up. And this is what we call our grow facility. Any shellfish seed we have, we bring in here. This is a basic system. It's a pump, pump the water from the pond. It's a flow-through system and it goes back out. What you're seeing here, our Cohog seed that we got back in June, this seed here was given to us by the County Cooperative Extension that was purchased through the county. Came from ARC.
What is ARC?
Aquaculture Research Corporation over in Dennis. And they're a private hatchery. What you're seeing, the different stages here, what we do is we're constantly calling them to keep them the same size together to grow out. And you see, there's quite a variety of size. These are our biggest ones down here, that are probably like 12 to 15 millimeter. And we have some down here that still, they just won't grow. Everything that you're seeing here was started out of the size of greatest sand back in June. So you get more of a variety of growth. A couple of people asked me on the way in, what we have out of the pond here, these are all oysters that we bought from, town purchased from a private company down in New York. And those are grow-all bags. And we have oysters in, probably about 150 oysters in each bag out there.
Have we done that before?
I'm sorry?
Is this the first season you've done?
No, no, no. Yeah, many years. Many years we've done it, yes.
Now, when do those go? When they're ready to harvest?
Into the pond. Into the pond and what we call the Salt Pond River.
Okay. And the public is allowed to...
Yep. In November, they harvest. They'll be ready to harvest. These here will probably winter over, some of them, under nets, under nets, just to give them a better chance to survive, you know, predators and everything else. But we're lucky enough, we got 300,000 seeds. That's what you're looking at here, 300,000 Cohogs from that county money.
Do they grow right onto the shell or where do they grow?
These, they don't grow on anything.
Where do they come from?
What do you mean, where do they come from? They're spawned out in a private hatchery.
I know. How do they get spawned out?
I don't know what you mean. You've got a male and a female. You've got the egg and the sperm that's put together that generates larva. But they're not like an oyster. They don't need anything to sit on, to set on. They'll just grow on the pond.
How are they born?
I'm not going there. Yeah. It's all yours.
I just gave a lecture yesterday. The male Cohog, the female Cohog release gametes into the water column. Those get together and fertilize the egg. And then they divide and then they start developing from a larval Cohog into a full-blown animal. So these, like Mike was saying, these are not like oysters that they set on something and grow from there. These are individual animals. They grow alone.
Yeah, they grow alone. Throw on the pond.
And once they go into the winter, then you don't see them again, right? You don't bring them back or anything?
Nope. We throw them out, let them go on their own.
They're all alive now as seeds?
Yeah, these are all alive.
Yeah. Okay. Amazing.
Yeah.
You're very nice, that, huh?
Great stuff.
What about the tiny ones? Will they develop?
I'm not killing it, am I? What do you mean develop? These won't be ready for harvest for probably two or three years.
How much harvest do you get out of that? I mean, will all of those...
Oh, no, 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 no. Not all. We hope somewhere around 80%. 80%. 80%. Yeah. Oh yeah, predators, you know, what they call winter die-off, you know, weather conditions and everything else.
Is this what red tide affects?
Red tide affects all shows.
All shows?
Yeah, all shows. Yep. And we have our own red tide here that happens every year. This is my 13th year here. We've had a red tide storm through everywhere.
Really?
Yeah.
And how big are they? Do you put them out in the water?
About 30 millimeters, which is about size of a quarter.
Maybe even above.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. These still, these will be in this building for another two and a half months. They'll keep right in here till November, first week of November. Same thing. Yep, all the same, same year. Different state.
And all they need is the pond water.
That's it. They're feeding off of nutrients in the water. All the other.
How big? Why are so far so many ministries and children?
Yeah. Yep. This is about a bad, I go about a beautiful league. Oh, which one is that?
I don't know.
There's several ones, Tom. Where do you look?
Six, seven, eight, six, right.
Yes, there's definitely three of them down there. Yep.
For nets for a year?
Yes. By that. Yeah. Twenty-eight hundred bags of remote set. Oysters. How many in the bag? Usually.
Thousand per bag. So 2,800 bags of oyster remote set, figure a thousand oysters for remote set bags.
2,800.
28 million.
2.8 million. So out of that number, we got 300,000 this year because we don't take any of the remotes that we do our own oysters. But county gave us 300,000 this year.
Just to add to this, every year we go up the bid and we buy seed on behalf of all the towns. We get the best price for them. And this year, the hatchery that you've been hearing about, A R C, it's, we only had one bid. In the past, we've had several, but there's only one commercial hatchery on Cape Cod. It's A R C, Agricultural Research Corporation in Dennis. There's a hatchery in Maine and there's one in Fisher's Island in New York. But the whole industry is dependent on A R C. So you keep hearing that name. And so we're working closely with them and trying to secure their future as well because that's an important entity for the whole county, for the commercial figures, the residential permit holders, aquacultures. As the industry goes, as A R C goes, so does the industry.
The Agricultural Research Center.
Corporation.
Is a private public corporation.
Yep, A R C. That's exactly. To do an assessment of a public property that is, the town, the town will ask the county to do this assessment and they'll do a plan and then the town can request funds to implement the plan. So you want to talk about what you did in Eastham?
Sure. We had two parcels that we actually did, our conservation land. One was Wiley Park. We're working on the second one, which is Southeastham Conservation. And as Bill said, we have somebody come in and help us out with the plan. And we did a lot of, a lot of the money, we purchased equipment, chainsaws, other such, to lug a lot of the material out that was going to be the fire issue. But we also did some cutting of fire roads, thinning, a lot of thinning in the areas, you know, that was susceptible to the wildfire as well.
We've done 18 plans from born to used here. Wealthily trodden feet town are managed primarily national park land. So they're managed by the national park. But all the other towns, we've done wildfire plans for. And most of them were implemented plans.
Yep.
And down here, this under the Cape, the December 9th storm, about, how many years ago was that?
2005.
Five, seven years ago, okay. That took its toll on a lot of open space here and a lot of trees were down. And it was basically fuel for potential fires. And we were able to help remove a lot of those.
We had almost 400 trees and I think it's 39 acre piece go down. It was all pine, all pine.
And they also received land grants.
Land grants. We've done a lot of work with signs, a lot of signage in our conservation areas, just small little signs along the trails telling somebody what type of tree it is to, you know, a welcome sign into an area where you park. We've done a lot of signs on the land grants.
Little bridge there over there.
Yeah, we did a bridge from Wiley Park over to our reserving property, which crosses over, it's a smoothway between Great Pond and Bridge Pond.
Beautiful bridge.
Yeah. And what they did, the way they built it was they constructed this so that kayaks can still get underneath to access it. Have you seen it?
I know.
So we've done a lot, we've done a lot with the land management grant money as well down here.
Does the county inform you about those?
They do.
Availability.
They do, yep.
That's how you find out.
We found out about them, we applied for them and the money we spread out, you know, throughout all the towns.
We send it to the announcement, to every conservation, the National Resources Department, the Selectman, the DPW, pre-warden, everybody in town gets a, the RFP.
What do you decide the extension service is going to cover, whatever isn't covered by anybody else? I mean, it sounds to me like the extension service covers everything.
Yeah, we do. We got it. Actually, we work with a lot of our stakeholders, whether the town officials or people in the industry, and they sort of set the stages for what's needed and try to fill in the voice.
And so you'd add that if you needed to.
Yes.
Deepwater Forest Extension is the most sophisticated group of service to take advice from the county office to the community.
I believe it.
Well, of course. Just like you told me.
Any other questions for Michael?
I just want to know why you have large, they're all put in at the same time. Why are some larger and some smaller within the same?
Think of it as like kids growing up. You get kids growing, you know, growth spurt. No, that's the way it is.
Really?
I mean, we'll have some that won't grow at all for whatever.
Tiny ones might not grow.
Yeah, they might not grow at all.
You can't predict it long. Looking there.
It's the gene they get.
Last stop. Larry Dapsis is our county entomologist and he heads up our Lyme disease deer tick research projects. So Larry's going to be showing us about some of the projects he's working on.
Okay. We've got a research site that we set up that we'll be hiking into and then we'll walk our way through. Just stay out in the bushes.
And so the night call this morning, I was just saying, I was just, instead of getting a call, this is.
To tick habitat. And this is actually very, very perfect tick habitat, the kind of the woods and the shady area, the high humidity and so, but this is probably in the tick's life cycle the safest time to be out here. The particular life stage the tick is in predominantly right now are the newly hatched larvae. So the eggs that were laid last fall and this spring are just hatching out now. So there's, this area is loaded with thousands of these little baby ticks. But here's the silver lining there. With this tick disease life cycle, the larval stage of the tick do not transmit any disease, Lyme or anything else. So at this point of the year, you can have lots of ticks out and really zero risk of Lyme or other infection and stuff. So.
When is the bad season? When is?
If we had been here probably two weeks ago or during July and June, that's, that's when probably 80, 85% of the cases of Lyme occur is, and that's when the nymph stage takes. So the eggs hatch into a larva and those are active until they get their first meal. They molt into a nymph and then they would hang in the brush until the following summer and stuff. But that's the highest risk period and stuff. So anyway, before we talk about why we're working with such funny high-tech equipment like this, let's, let's talk about the little bit larger picture of why we're doing what we're doing in the first place. Terms of Lyme disease, as far as infectious diseases go, it is the most prevalent tick borne disease in the United States. There's over 25,000 cases a year. In Massachusetts, it is the second most prevalent infectious disease in the state. And it's only second to hepatitis C and not by much. And then it's, it's actually four times more prevalent than things that people automatically consider serious like foodborne illnesses like stalm and Nellis and things like that. So Lyme disease is a very prominent part of our infectious disease landscape. The incidence rates on the Cape and the islands have historically been the highest. Lyme is on the increase across the Commonwealth. Still highest on the islands. It historically has been second highest on Cape Cod. But in recent years, there are other counties in the Commonwealth that are probably as hot as an area as the Cape or even slightly higher incidence. So it's on the increase kind of exponentially. It's probably the reason five bills have been filed up on Beacon Hill in the last year with the one that was signed into law, the Linsky bill, which is to create a commission to basically come up with an overall integrated management plan for the state. The other part of the deer tick disease ecosystem, deer ticks can transmit three diseases as far as we know. Lyme, which is fairly common. Anybody here had Lyme and stuff? Okay, we won't get it today. I've been, I've been ordered by Bill Clark to not come down with Lyme disease. It would look bad for the program. But, but in addition to Lyme disease, there are two others that cause anaplasmosis and babesiosis. Now babesiosis is something, I mean, we're watching all three, but babesiosis is on the increase. And if you look at the number of cases in the Commonwealth, over half the cases of babesiosis occur on the Cape and the islands. So like Lyme that started out in a little geographic area and spread over time, we're wondering with other researchers, are we looking at babesiosis as potentially the next Lyme? And can we be on top of it more aggressively than, than with Lyme? That's kind of a horse out of the barn, but, but it's here, it's endemic to the northeast. In fact, Lyme has been found in 49 to 50 states. Anybody guess which is the 50th state that?
Alaska.
Alaska. A lot of people say Alaska. Actually, it's Hawaii. Hawaii's never had a reported case of Lyme and stuff. So, so a big component of our program here is education is key to prevention and stuff. So you're in a, you're in a very favorable tick habitat, but we don't, as part of our education, we don't want people to be fearful of their environment. We want people to be mindful that it's about being, it's situation awareness, the understanding the tick life cycle and, and your highest risk periods of the year. So the more information you have, the more you can do to protect yourselves. Now, the current research that we have going is this device. It's called a four-poster deer feeding station. This was developed by USTA in Texas as part of a project to control cattle tick fever. So as they were looking at other infectious disease opportunities, they, they kind of modified that one to something that would be able to work with deer. What we basically have here is a hopper that we fill with whole kernel corn, like that. And, and it's actually a very nice part of this is that deer love to browse on a lot of different things. We can't afford to buy acorns, but we can afford twice cleaned corn. So the idea of this is you have these stations situated with the corn, deer are drawn to them, they feed at them. And what we do, I'll just pass this around, these what look like paint rollers, we actually load up with a, with a small amount of a very good contact insecticide. So the game plan is that the adult tick, they favor a larger host like a deer as part of their ways to get a blood meal. They'll, they'll feed non-person, but in the fall and the spring, the adult deer tick will find a lot of deer. And deer can support a lot of deer ticks. If you were to look at an adult deer in the fall and the spring and look at their ears, it would look like a crust on that. If you looked at a deer and counted, you would probably find anywhere from 200 to 400 adult ticks feeding. And so if you start doing the arithmetic, each adult female deer tick can lay 1,000 to 3,000 eggs. So the reproductive potential of this is incredible. So there are numbers, number of solutions to look at reducing tick populations. And we know that tick abundance is, is directly correlated to the incidence of Lyme disease. If you look on the Cape, Dave Simser's data that he accumulated over a period of years, that the tick populations go up and down over time, kind of like alternate years. When I saw that data, it was quite interesting because if you take that and overlay it with the confirmed cases of Lyme disease on Cape Cod, they go up and down together and stuff. So, so reducing the abundance of ticks is a positive thing to reducing risk and that's what this program's all about. So the small amount of contact insecticide that's on here is, basically makes contact with the deer as they're feeding. So, so the deer will kind of brush up against these rollers and get it on their neck and chin and stuff. And this insecticide probably is active for two to three weeks. And it is basically 100% effective at, so if you look at a deer that's, that's been treated by one of these stations, they have no ticks on them. So as you start thinking about the pest management equation, like what can I do to reduce the overall factors? People leap automatically, let's get rid of the deer. Let's hunt the deer, reduce the populations. And the truth is that that's, that's not only highly controversial, but probably not very effective. Hunters take about 10,000 to 12,000 deer a year out of a herd of 90,000. And to do that, fish and wildlife issues about 75,000 permits. So not a big success rate. So you need, either need better hunters or rethink this. I mean, I tell people that in Wisconsin, the wolf population takes out 10,000 deer a year on their own. So if you, if you look at it from another point of view, if we can successfully treat a large population or a large percentage of the deer population in the fall and in the spring, reduce that overall tick population, the egg laying stage of the tick, you should see a consequential reduction in the overall population of the nymphs the following year because it has a two-year life cycle. So that's the game plan. So, so instead of like killing Bambi and trying to control the problem that way, what we've done is effectively take Bambi and turn Bambi into Rambo. We have, we are creating a killing machine that walks around picking up and killing ticks that has no off switch and stuff. So this device was invented back about 1996. It's been patented. The patent has been exclusively assigned to the American Lyme Disease Foundation in Connecticut. They're manufactured by C.R. Daniels in Maryland. And they've been marketing this product for about, since about 2004, 2005. Massachusetts has not yet allow a permit to feed deer and, and treat the deer with this particular pesticide. So the scope of this project is to get a real world handle on how can you use these? And in fact, we're, a big part of this is to see how effective they are, compare the cost benefit of it versus an area-wide application of pesticides. So as part, as an IPM approach, this is an alternative to an area-wide application of a pesticide. You're using a pesticide in a very concentrated way in an area that, in a, in a way that doesn't interact with the environment or expose the environment to the, to the, to the product.
Why doesn't Massachusetts allow it?
Pardon?
Are you saying there's only one of these?
One of these.
Models? Pieces of equipment.
Well, we're running 42. I don't know if I, yeah. This project involves 42 of them that are distributed on Cape Cod, Martha's Vineyard, Nantucket. And that's by virtue of the fact that it's, this particular study is EPA funded and we're in the third year of that funding.
You were responding to the fact that there was no license for these yet is what you said.
Well, that's what I thought I heard both. It's, fish and wildlife has some very, in some cases legitimate concerns. For example, if you have deer feeding stations, are you altering the movement patterns of deer? Are you bringing deer in from an area to a new area? Are you going to increase the amount of risks for vehicle collisions? Are you going to increase the risk of damage to suburban ornamental plantings? Are you going to increase the risk of damage to suburban ornamental plantings, things like that? There are diseases that deer can transmit to each other, it's a disease called chronic wasting. It's not present in New England, but one of the concerns is if you're, if you have a community feed trough, so to speak, would that make it easier for the deer to transmit this? So, so this project and, and other projects that are running parallel to us are mindful of those type of concerns and hopefully we can make a case to Fish and Wildlife at some point, that, that this is a, it's not a silver bullet, but this could potentially be a very good tactical approach to area-wide tick management. It is being used in other states, New Jersey, there are military installations that are using them. There's a number of states down south, so New Jersey on south, down south to Texas are deploying these. In some cases, there are county parks that are using them, golf courses, individual landowners. The manufacturer recommends that one feeding station per every 40 or 50 acres of land. That seems to represent kind of the core range of a lot of deer populations. Other aspects of this particular study that we're running that is different is that we are going to be incorporating photography into this. Right now, all we know is that when we come out to a station every two weeks, we, we know that we have to replace corn, we have to re-treat the rollers, but we really don't know what was interacting and how. So these cameras, we're going to be deploying this fall, it is a motion sensitive camera that is, can work in daylight as well as at night, which is when our friends interact most freely with these. So we're going to be able to document the success rate, so to speak, so how many deer are coming into these things? What percentage of success do we see and can measure with deer, do 100% of them that feed at the station get treated with these rollers? So we want to kind of quantify what's working in our favor or, or what might be a liability, what other forms of wildlife are interacting with these. We know, we, we have a lot of evidence, raccoons, what you see here is they're not immune from squirrels.
Nothing is.
That's what's done in a few of our stations so far. And, and if the stations are emptied and the deer stop coming to them as a result before we get to them, how long does it take through the photography to, to measure how the re-establishment time? You know, so if the station's empty, does it take days for the deer to come back in contact after you fill it or is it, you know, a week or, or something? So it's a way to kind of analyze our overall program efficiency and stuff. The other aspect of this study that's a little bit different is that we're not just focused on Lyme, we are looking at the other two infectious diseases that deer tick carries, babesiosis and anaplasmosis. And we have a very, very good collaborative relationship now with UMass Amherst. Steve Rich's lab is doing the analysis of, of the, of the ticks and the first round of data that was generated from the 2010 ticks, when you look at the data on infections in terms of what percentage of them are carrying Lyme and at what stage, so we know that 20 or 25% of the nymphs on average carry Lyme, about 8 to 10% of the nymph stage ticks, the ones that are most active during the summer ones, are also carrying either babesiosis or anaplasmosis. And in some cases with the adult stage tick, we know that they carry all three, about 5% of the ticks. And, and if you start looking at it on the, on the basis of location, you see some very, very different distributions. These diseases are not uniformly spread throughout areas. So in, in, at one particular site, over 50% of the nymph stage ticks had Lyme and another 20% had either Lyme plus babesia or anaplasma. That would be a hot neighborhood. We've had other sites where 0% of the ticks that we analyzed had Lyme, but a third of them had anaplasma. So it's a very, very complex host pathogen ecosystem that's in play here. I mean, it, it's so complex, it actually is governed in part by oak trees and acorns. Acorns is actually the fuel that drives this whole ecosystem forward and, and it actually leads to the oscillations you see in the, in the, the oscillation of tick populations and then subsequent infection rates among people and stuff. So there's a lot of people working on this, we think it could be part of an effective integrated pest management strategy going forward. It's just going to allow, require some collaboration with Fish and Wildlife to, to help them and them help us see what's the most effective way to implement this going forward.